We have three separate meetings tonight. The first is a public hearing for the Cunningham Township Board. This will be a public hearing at 6:30 PM, Monday, August 9th, 2021, to receive input on the fiscal year 2020-2021 Cunningham Township budget. It's being held in council chambers. This hearing will be followed by the regular meeting of the Cunningham Town Board. So if you have public comments related to town board business, I would ask you to save them until then. If you have comments specifically on the budget, this hearing is the time to do that. So I will call this hearing to order. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Chanawith?
I'm present, thank you.
Mr. Williams? Mayor?
And I'm here too.
All right. Next item is public input on the Cunningham Township budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Does anyone wish to comment on the budget at this time? Did we have any written input? I didn't receive any. Okay. All right, seeing none. This hearing is adjourned. We'll move on to the meeting of the Cunningham Town Board for Monday, August 9th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Ms. Chanawith?
Yes, here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
All right. Next item is approval of the minutes from June 28th, 2021. And this includes the public hearing on June 28th and the regular meeting for Monday, June 28th. Could we have a motion for approval?
I move to approve the minutes of Monday, June 28th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Grace. Any corrections? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? All right. At this point, or Danielle, did you want to pull your item off?
Yes, so if you look at our new business budget, which is actually for the fiscal year that just ended, the reason it's here is because there were so many changes under COVID that we actually had to bring it back before you officially. We received input from our accountant today. There's a few adjustments that she would like to make before it's ready for an audit. So I'm going to ask that 8B essentially be tabled or removed from the agenda until the next month.
Okay. Could I get a motion to remove item 8B from the agenda?
I'll move that we move ordinance number T 2021 08002, ordinance approving 2020 and 2021 Cunningham Township budget to the next scheduled meeting.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that will be on the agenda for next month. All right. Next item on the agenda is public participation. I have one card at this point, and it's Katie Muir. Please come forward, state your name, and then turn on the microphone so that there's a green light if it's not already on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie Muir, and I am one of the long-term tenants who was informed by Supervisor Chatawiss May 7th, your tenant's letter, that I would need to vacate my apartment no later than August 15th, 2021, as a result of an intergovernmental agreement between Cunningham Township and Urbana School District Number 116, approved by the Urbana City Council on February 8th, 2021, via Resolution T 2021 02001R. On July 6th, 2021, Supervisor Chatawiss submitted her application for a special use permit to allow an emergency shelter at 206 and 208 East California Avenue to house families with students that attend Urbana School District Number 116, as well as individuals with disabilities awaiting approval for SSI. On July 30th, 2021, Kathryn Trotter, Urbana Plan Commission, issued her memorandum regarding Plan Case 2427, SU 21, for a special use permit to allow an emergency shelter at 206 and 208 East California Avenue. That includes the following language. Quote, "The use is simply a change from apartment housing to emergency housing, which differ mostly by the length of stay for residents." Supervisor Chanawith's memo dated August 4th, 2021, uploaded online for tonight's meeting under Reports of Officers, includes the following language. Quote, "See You at Home remains closed and has announced a policy of not allowing anyone who has alcohol or drugs, including cannabis, in their system. We met with See You at Home to express our concerns that no one we serve will be able to stay at the shelter." During a Cunningham Township meeting a few months ago, Supervisor Chatawiss informed the Town Board trustees that she found it necessary to install surveillance cameras at the township office as a result of the unruly and destructive behavior exhibited by some of the individuals her agency serves that she stated occurred during regular daytime office hours. During a special use permit public hearing convened on August 5th, very brief mention was made of the written public comments the owner of Vine Street Motors, Tony Blacks, admitted for the public hearing, addressing his concerns regarding safety. And the homeowners who live directly across the street from 206 and 208 East California expressed their concerns regarding the safety, with one of the homeowners requiring in regards to the age of the students that would be housed in the emergency shelter. Supervisor Chanawith chose not to address the concerns expressed regarding safety during the special use permit public hearing, except to say that it is illegal to discriminate against families with children in spite of the fact that she has found it necessary to install surveillance cameras in the township office to protect her staff and volunteers from some of the individuals her agency serves. For reasons unknown, the Regional Office of Education for Champagne and Four Counties ended its emergency shelter program in 2019, resulting in Supervisor Chanawith's decision to begin housing families with students who attend Urbana School District Number 116 at the roadway inn in Urbana using private dollars from the Angel Fund she created. On July 9th, 2021, a homeless man was arrested at the Urbana roadway inn for allegedly lighting a fire inside a room, quote, "because he has enemies," unquote, as reported by the News Gazette. Also on July 9th, 2021, a teenager was arrested at the apartment complex known as The Castle, located at 1806 South Cottage Grove Avenue, being one of two teenagers arrested, age 18 and 16 years old, for shooting that occurred in Rantoul on the 4th of July in which a 15-year-old and a 7-year-old were shot, and three other victims were grazed in the gunfire. Yesterday, at 4:41 PM in the afternoon, a 22-year-old man was shot several times in an apartment in the apartment complex known as The Castle, located at 1806 South Cottage Grove Avenue. Urbana Police detained a 21-year-old Urbana male and a 15-year-old Urbana male juvenile from inside one of the two apartments associated with the shooting. After conducting a search, police recovered three pistols, a large amount of cannabis from one apartment, and a sawed-off shotgun and ammunition from the other apartment. The 15-year-old was arrested for aggravated battery with a firearm, possession with the intent to deliver cannabis, unlawful use of weapons, and armed robbery. The children arrested for these gun-related crimes live within the boundaries of the Urbana School District Number 116. It is simply not realistic to think the only difference in the change from apartment housing to emergency housing is the length of stay for residents. It is well-known that individuals transitioning from homelessness are faced with overcoming trauma, substance abuse, psychological or emotional problems, and/or financial distress, all of which can result in unpredictable behavior. Supervisor Chanawith has repeatedly stated that the families housed at the emergency shelter will be carefully screened before being approved to move into the emergency shelter at 206 and 208 East California Avenue if the special use permit is approved by the Urbana City Council on August 16th. I'm sure Green Street Realty, who owns the apartment complex known as The Castle, located at 1806 South Cottage Grove Avenue, screens tenants during their application process. Therefore, the question becomes, will Cunningham Township follow the lead of See You at Home and screen families for alcohol and drug abuse before authorizing them to stay at the emergency shelter at 206 and 208 East California Avenue and take additional steps to ensure the safety of residents and businesses in the surrounding community? And a point you might want to consider is these children, shooters, their families will be evicted from The Castle, and they might very well go to Cunningham Township and ask for housing. And you won't know who they are because it's a juvenile, and you can't release their name.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Cunningham Town Board?
I have something to read from Alan Axelrod.
Okay, go ahead.
"Good evening, Sharice. If you could please read this comment during public comment section of the Township Board meeting. A graphic recently circulated gave the impression, to those who didn't read the small text, that one would be adopting an increasing number of bedrooms if they donated to the Township donor fund. However, upon closer inspection, one reads that it is for subsidizing the cost of the building which the Township has purchased. There is nothing wrong with that subsidy, but as there has been quite a lot of contention between former tenants of the building and Township Supervisor Danielle Chanawith, it would be a point of concern when continued ambiguities that documentedly mislead members of the public occur. There are additional concerns, but this is of the contemporary variety and typeable in the time that I have tonight. As a reminder, the Township Board is a supervisory role to the Township Supervisor, as confusing as it may be. As, yeah, I think it's supposed to be, as it may be. It is your duty to ask thoughtful questions to protect the integrity of the office's mission, the rights of the interns and staff, as well as the dignity of the participants. Stay safe, Alan."
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Cunningham Town Board? Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the committee to verify bills. Town Fund and GA Fund, Danielle?
Sure. Good evening. So, just pulling up the supervisor. So in the Town Fund this last month, we had $26,957.42. In expenditures in the General Assistance Fund, we had $82,438.06. That totals $109,395.48. And I just wanted to, actually, I'll hold my comments until we get to the reports of officers. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the town bills.
Mary Alice?
Do you know I was going to raise my hand? I had a quick question, and I don't have the bills in front of me. I just had them two seconds ago. There is a cost for a sign, and I'm wondering if Township now has electronic signage?
Oh, we've had electr, no. You're referring to Hello Sign?
Yes, 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 thank you.
Hello Sign is a way to sign documents online.
Okay.
And we implemented it months ago with COVID. It's a monthly fee.
That's fine. I just wanted to know what signs we were doing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Danielle? Sharice?
I don't know if this is relevant, but I guess I would like some more information regarding what Alan wrote.
So essentially, I don't, I have not seen that communication. I have no idea what he's referring to. So as you know, because you're a Town Board member, and you can respond to him and anyone else who is misinformed, that essentially, the property is 100% funded by the Township. And all of the private donations that we collect directly go to meet the material needs of residents, which I have said every month for the last, you know, 36 months. So it's simply false. So I haven't seen the graphic he's referring to. If you could forward me the comment, you're welcome to, but it sounds like he just isn't accurate, has inaccurate information.
Okay. And I guess what I would ask too is to see the graphic, because I don't know what, I don't have a clue either of what he's talking about. But I just thought maybe you would know.
If you look at our Facebook page, it's my guess that he's referring to our request for furniture items. And if people would like to give money, we can purchase things like new mattresses, because we're not taking used mattresses. So essentially, there's two requests. For folks who want to donate furniture items, they contact us. We have a volunteer, Carol Insky, who we appreciate very much. She's a super volunteer, and she's actually vetting the materials so that we can furnish the six apartments. So the furnishings are 100% through donations. That allows us to keep our township dollars to support people with their move-out assistance, general assistance, and other items. So we've been very clear from the beginning and consistent that all donations that come into the Township through the Angel Donor Fender 100%, basically purchasing things on behalf of participants to meet their material needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Town Fund or GA Fund? Could I have a motion to place the, to approve these?
I move to approve the Town Fund and General Assistance Fund bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by James. Further discussion? Do we need a roll call on this, Fred? Okay, could I have a voice vote? All those in favor of approval of the Town Fund and General Assistance Fund, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Reports of officers.
Okay. So essentially, I have quite a bit. I'll try to be brief, but Supervisor's memo covers this. Our General Assistance participants are down to 85. This is really good news. It's partly because there's a lot of jobs available. We also see a lot of folks getting general, excuse me, getting disability assistance, SSI and SSDI. So essentially, we are moving in the right direction. 25 are homeless. That's down from 33, partly because we housed a number of people in this last month. You'll see 20 rental assistance items, and many of those were homeless move-ins. But we also did a survey of our homeless participants, and some of them have addresses in Urbana, so we were able to convert them essentially to receive their checks by mail. Rental assistance, this is probably the largest month that we've had. We have 20 rental assistance participants or households from this last month. Part of it is that we were clearing off all the rental assistance before, like, we basically were finishing up our piece, and then now we're referring people to Regional Plan Commission. We do continue to do rental assistance for two categories of people. Folks who do not certify that they are COVID-impacted in any way. It's hard to find people who would say that because we've all been impacted in various ways. And the second is for folks who are moving in. Usually, they're homeless or near homeless, and they're moving into place, and we provide that move-in assistance. Eviction, tracking, and prevention. So I am very pleased to announce that we have an eviction, tracking, and prevention initiative. This is a new initiative to reduce the number of evictions in Urbana. It involves advocacy for residents threatened with legal or illegal evictions. So I linked to a New York Times piece for you so that you could see that 12% of Champagne County, that's the county, residents are behind on rent, and they owe an average of 33.70. That's due to that research model. That's actually better than the surrounding counties. It's still not great. We don't want to see 12% of our residents evicted. But, for example, the Bronx, where my friend lives, she's at 26% in her community. So just to give you a perspective. On August 3rd, the CDC issued a new order temporarily halting evictions through November 3rd in counties with heightened levels of COVID. I have confirmed with Julie Pride that we are included in that. That said, to be covered, tenants must submit a declaration form to their landlord to be protected, and they can get that declaration form on the CDC website. So we do see evictions happening for non-covered persons. There were 14 evictions filed in the first three days of August, according to Judge Olmstead. Those evictions will not be processed until after the Supreme Court deadline. But it does mean that they're in the court system, and that's starting. And we did see evictions of families and households from June 25th until about the middle of July. We saw evictions processing before the Supreme Court stepped in. So we have started to attend eviction court. We're going to be there every Monday. We have flyers that we've worked on with RPC and City of Champagne Township. We deliver those flyers to folks in eviction court so we can help them. And Judge Olmstead has actually given us a little room next to eviction court, where we can invite folks, if they want, to come and actually fill out the application for move-in assistance right then and there. We are, we just, and this is new as of since I wrote the Supervisor's memo, we'll be partnering with RPC and the City of Champagne Township to do bus ads on 99 buses around Champagne County about emergency rental assistance. So I'm very pleased. Each of those entities will pitch in dollars, and we've agreed to a common graphic. Let's see. Eviction records between March 20 and March 2022 will be sealed automatically. Unsealing will be allowed only when there's a judgment issued. You may have seen WCIA has helped us give, earn media on this issue. So utility support, I just want to point out that a half of all utility support that we have done has been in the last three weeks. So this is, we're receiving a lot of phone calls with requests for utility support. And we put out a call today, actually asking people to donate to that fund to help replenish it. 41% of folks who we have helped apply for subsidized housing have actually gotten into subsidized housing. So yes, applause here. So of the 133 or 31 general assistance participants representing 90 households, 37 of those households have gotten in. That's huge, and we are systematically working to end homelessness in our community. Emergency housing, we have served, as of the date of this memo, 30 households, including 32 adults and 35 children. That is since we opened that program July of 2020. As of the time of this memo, we were serving two households. Essentially, if we exclude transfers to another emergency shelter, our typical stay is about two months. We held a neighborhood meeting. We had about 40 people show up to our neighborhood meeting. Mary Alice Wu was there. Grace Wilken was there. And then we had, you know, a number of members of the public. There were city staff as well. That went very well. We had a WCIA piece on it. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of our special use permit, and you should see that with your city council hat on next week. We launched an adopt-an-appartment program. You can look on and see our wish list. We are currently installing washable hard flooring throughout the units. And yes, See You at Home remains closed, but should be opening on the 15th. We are still in the process of negotiating with them around their intake process. Just to be clear, See You at Home supports single individuals only, not families. It's a different constituency than our emergency shelter program. Our, and lastly, our Bridge to Home program is a rapid rehousing program. It's fiscally sponsored by the City of Urbana, who helped to navigate that system with the state. We do up to 12 months of rent for literally homeless families. They have to be referred by centralized intake for the homeless. Last month, we served three households, and we moved our first household into housing. So we're very excited about that program. And I think I will leave it there and open up for any questions you all may have.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I was hoping that you could expand upon exactly what the Bridge to Home program is. You talk about it being rapid rehousing program. If you could just give us a bit more detail.
Absolutely. So essentially, Bridge to Home was proposed as a result of, so we're part of the Continuum Service Providers, the homeless, which includes the city, the township, the cities, the townships, the county, and a number of homeless service providers. And for the last three years, we have convened as a group to say we don't have enough agencies applying for emergency solutions grants from our county. And we're missing out on dollars that could be coming to our county that aren't. So those emergency solution grant dollars increased significantly under COVID, and we were approached by the Continuum Service Providers, the homeless, to see if we would be willing to receive those dollars. We could not directly receive them because we don't have a relationship with the state yet. So even though we are getting a compliant, we have all our audits in, they were only servicing organizations that had received ESG the year before. So essentially, we approached the City of Urbana. They agreed to fiscally sponsor us. And what that program does is it provides 12, up to 12 months of rent for folks who are literally homeless, registered through centralized intake, who are referred to our program based on criteria. It's for anyone in the county who is referred to us, and RPC does the referrals. And as long as it matches our criteria, essentially, we help them move into housing. And in some cases, we've, essentially, our emergency, the families that stay in emergency housing may be re-referred back to us, but so far, that hasn't happened. I mean, it could happen, but essentially, we just take whoever the county sends to us based on our parameters. So far, it's been a number of single individuals, and many of them have been homeless for a long time, and they're kind of at the top of the list to be referred. The person that we just recently housed is in his 40s, and he has been homeless since he was 13 years old. So that gives you a sense of the types of folks that we're supporting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for this great report and the work you guys are doing. It's great goals to end homelessness in our community, and I hope that we can see that as a reality.
It's totally doable. It's totally possible for us to do that.
I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit on some of the challenges to permanent housing to permanent housing and the increase in vouchers coming in the future?
Yeah. So it's, it's very exciting that that housing authority during COVID got 50 vouchers through what is called the C-19 program. Very bureaucratic term to be referred to the form that is used for folks who have stayed in shelter at least two weeks, then become eligible for a voucher. And so we have housed, meaning we as a community have housed a lot of people. About probably at this point, about 40 households have been housed through the C-19 program. And we're part of a consortium of folks who meet every two weeks to help that population. We recently found out that our community is receiving emergency housing vouchers through the housing authority. It's because the, all of the rules haven't been published yet. My understanding is that it's for literally homeless folks and folks who are at extreme risk of homelessness, who are vulnerable in certain ways. I don't have all the parameters. We'd have to talk to the housing authority. Essentially, what, people will be, the vouchers will come to the community, we'll be matching folks to the vouchers. But once they get a voucher, it's a housing choice voucher and they have to essentially go out and find housing to move in. So as I spoke to the mayor a week ago, I was very pleased that she talked about taking on discrimination in Urbana. And I think that that's, we're going to be kind of squeezed trying to get these vouchers out the door if they're also facing a discrimination in the community. So essentially, I would say the two challenges to helping house folks with vouchers. One is staff time to actually navigate systems for folks who may have, you know, traumatic brain injuries or, you know, mental health issues. And we are going to offer some of that staff time through township. And the second is taking on discrimination throughout our whole community. And I would just add, there is a bill before the State House to actually make it illegal to discriminate against people who are paying with vouchers. Unfortunately, I don't think that bill is going to move fast enough for it to affect our community with these vouchers, although I certainly support the bill and I've submitted my comments around it.
Any other questions? Okay. Grace?
I guess on that same line, but in a sense, we don't really need it, right? Maybe not a question for Danielle for the town because we have our own nondiscrimination ordinance. So we don't really.
Correct. But it always helps to have statewide support as well.
Thank you.
Wayne, did you have a report tonight? Okay. Is there any unfinished business? All right, we'll move on to new business, Resolution Number T 2021-08-010R, which is a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with Pellman and Dold PC for audit services for the, that should be the fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
So essentially, and I've asked Wayne to answer questions as well. The two of us have been working to secure an auditor for this next year. As you know, CLA has been our auditor for five years. It's important to change auditors. Typically, every five years is a good timeframe. We ended up asking a number of auditors in the community. As public health can tell you and many other government agencies, you can send RFP out to 10 people and you only get two or three responses because auditors are very busy right now. I don't know why, but it seems like auditors are a premium. So in this case, the best, we had two proposals come back from, this one was the most affordable, it was the most complete. And we're recommending that we go forward with Pellman and Dold PC for audit services for last fiscal year. And again, we are happy to answer. Any questions you have?
Any questions on this item? James?
Yeah, I was wondering, did you have any recommendations from other organizations for this particular auditor?
So when.
Could you make sure your mics turned on, Wayne, please? Okay, thank you.
When this auditor submitted their proposal, they also submitted letters of reference that we checked. And there are at least one township, there were a couple of school districts.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution Number T-2021-08-010R, Resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with Pellman and Dold PC for audit services for fiscal year 2021, 20, 2020, 2021.
Is there a second, please?
A second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded, or moved by Chandra, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion?
I just want to add that typically, our audits in the past with CLA, we've always had a ding against us in internal control because they also help us with bookkeeping support. They're going to continue to help us with bookkeeping support. So this will actually remove a ding against us.
Okay, thank you. Do we need a vote? Roll call?
Yes, do a roll call.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes. And again, as we noted, the second item there under new business will be considered on next month's agenda. And with no further business before the Cunningham Town Board, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Are we ready to go? Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council, Monday, August 9th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. And I believe they will be present at next month's meeting. Okay. Next item is additions to the agenda. I don't believe there are any additions to the agenda. Next on the agenda is presentations and public input. Again, a reminder, if you want to address the Urbana City Council, please fill out the yellow card at the back of the room. There should be a button right there on the.
Hello, is that there?
Yes, and please speak right into the microphone. And you'll have five minutes.
Okay. And my name is Julie Watkins. And it's been a while since the next last meeting that I've listened to. One of the, one of the last meetings, they were said that having hybrid meetings where, or at least for public input, that people could input via Zoom instead of in-person, one of the, the comment was that it wasn't compliant with Open Meetings Act. And I'm not sure how it isn't compliant. And since there's, with a lot of public, both while we were Zoom, while meetings were on Zoom and in-person have asked, I was hoping that we could get maybe some look into that to see how it is not compliant and if it could be made compliant since there's been so much people asking about it. I mean, I'm kind of, it's, I'm, I'm not used to being in buildings that aren't my home lately. And I would appreciate being able to put in input via Zoom. Another thing that I wanted to mention was I was looking for the, the last meeting to find out where the live stream was because it used to be, I could go click at the bottom of the agenda on, to get to the Zoom meeting. And I guess it wasn't there before at the bottom of the agenda, but I think it would be nice if you had a link. And that's the comment. I actually called this morning and after I public comment, I'm going to go back and find it so I can listen to the rest of the meeting at home where I feel more comfortable. So if you could, that's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Next person to speak is Tracy.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chung. When can we have honest communication in Urbana? Mayor Marlin lied to the public to justify excessive use of force by Urbana police officers. Mayor Marlin lied to justify hurdles to residents obtaining public records, especially those related to the Urbana Police Department misconduct. Mayor Marlin lied to silence residents who are critical of herself, certain unethical city employees and the police department. Mayor Marlin lied about the Open Meetings Act preventing the city to allow the option of giving, of the public being able to give public input via Zoom. Just last week, Mayor Marlin lied again to the public when responding to concerns about two consecutive city council meetings being canceled. Mayor Marlin claimed that only one meeting was canceled. City council members, all of you know that this is not true. One meeting was canceled, another meeting was rescheduled and then canceled. Two meetings were canceled. I'm not even going to ask Mayor Marlin to stop the dishonesty as apparently her moral compass has told her that it is okay to lie over and over again when it suits her agenda and certain narratives. But what about you, city council members? Not one of you spoke up when you had to know that Mayor Marlin was lying, that only one meeting was canceled. Does your silence mean that you are okay with this kind of dishonesty? Does this kind of behavior, this kind of attitude, this kind of conduct align with Urbana's missions and values? Does this align with your responsibility to your constituents? You guys have the power to speak up and hold the mayor, and hold Mayor Marlin accountable. If there's no accountability, how are we ever going to have honest conversations that have been missing all this while? Thank you.
Next person up is Benjamin Theobald.
Let's see, this is going to be a bit of a challenge. I'm here to speak about, in support of a program called, or the SWIFT Program, Support for Workforce Training, which is at the Parkland College. It just finished its first year in action. And it deals with solving many of the most pressing issues that are facing the, here in Urbana, as well as Champaign. But it need, in order for it to keep operating, it needs to receive, you know, funding that would allow it to succeed. The SWIFT Program provides job training in high-demand areas like IT, so like computers, construction and healthcare for positions that start around $50,000 a year or above. This is, right now, we're but under, we're going around the Champaign-Urbana area. You probably have heard from a man named Eddie Pratt Jr., who's been very vocal. He's been kind of the leader on this. And we're demanding that both cities, Champaign and Urbana, to match about a million dollars in funding for the SWIFT Program. And I don't think that's a bit much, much for, and considering that you're actually investing into the community. That's money that will go really, you know, back in, you know, to the cities. That's, you know, this is a, you know, a real opportunity right now. And, you know, a lot of, you know, this is money that will go into the community. And, you know, we've been going, you know, door-to-door cannabising and it's been all positive so far. So I would really hope that, you know, what we want, we were hoping to increase enrollment in this SWIFT Program and increase the stipend for those who are enrolled. So, you know, this is a good, you know, a good opportunity for people who, you know, are looking for a job. And it's, you know, it's $50,000 a year, but that's, that can get you pretty far in this part of the community. And so I, I really hope you would consider investing in the, in the SWIFT Program. All they're asking is for, I believe, a million dollars. But, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. My name is Renee Bullock. I reside in Urbana, Illinois. First of all, we, the people of the United States, in order to perform a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote for the general welfare and serve the, secure the blessings that all men are created equal. Do you all know what that is? It's called a preamble. I will now explain the content of that preamble. This is hard. I have a terminally ill daughter and she's been alive for 20 years. Her two organ transplants. If it wasn't for the wonderful community that I live in, she wouldn't be alive and the doctors and all that. And I lived outside of Washington DC, 9.4 miles from the White House. I grew up in Newman, Illinois. I know Law, Pelosi, all them are still there. Durbin, Schumer. Okay? You are elected from your peers to spend my tax dollars and you've got Lincoln Square over here that you put four times a year. And mayor, I've called your office, you've never returned my call. And you plant flowers and you water them, yet we have roads that you break your axles and all that with potholes. If I can plow snow, that picture that I just sent, I plowed snow for IDOP for eight years. All right? And I got you all to your destination. You're all old enough. And I had to quit because my daughter had end-stage renal disease and I did dialysis on her. No pity. I did it. I went to Barnes, we lived there. We lived at Northwestern, we're now at Indy Peoria. And 20 years later, she's alive because of wonderful people. And I'm speaking for the people of Urbana, Illinois. What it's coming down to is reform of jails. We need to take the handcuffs off our police officers and keep these gangs in for all of us. They're hurting all of us. They're hurting all of us. The drug wars are here since they closed for Andy Green. I know my politics, but you're not spending money in the right areas. Quit planting flowers, fix our roads. You're spending my tax dollars and my, my community's tax dollars. And you need to reform jails. Give them jobs. Give them jobs to do, but, but make license plates. Come on. I'm 60, I've been around. I, I, if I can do it and plow snow and all that, you all can fight, not just for a page or a paycheck because you retire in two years. You know that Champaign has minus 79 police officers? They're getting killed. And it's going to happen to us. And we're all good. It's the gang war, the drug war. I can go, I can go Cuomo, I can go Putin. I'm globally acknowledged, but this is Urbana, Illinois. Sunny Crest, we had three triple murders, double murders in three days. Never had that. My neighbor got a bullet in, in her house of a drive-by shooting. I witnessed the two runners away. I called 911. Yeah. It was a drive-by. My Walgreens got shattered, the front windows. Yesterday, behind county, the old county market, there was a shooting. I, I'm never afraid, I'm afraid to go out of my home and I'm speaking for many residents of Urbana. You need to reform. A council doesn't work. I went to marriage counseling. It doesn't work. You know, we need to reform and you guys need to take the money and you need to. You know, we need to reform and you guys need to take the money and you need to put it and speak up and have a backbone. I'm serious. It works. I'm a troubleshooter, but Mayor, I've called your office. I call Dick Durbin's all the time. I call and I'm an advocate and I've changed laws. Please stand up. I know you've got your peers in here, Chicago. I know you've got Kamala. I know you got, I know them all. But come on, quit watering the flowers and planting them every or watering them every week because of the governor's nephew's aunt's sister, whatever. We need the roads fixed. I'm a taxpayer. When I worked for IDOP, that picture I passed around, they took out a third of my taxes. But that's okay. You know, my daughter's out, father died. I raised her on my own, never complained of a single parenting. But for you and all of us, we all are going to be in trouble. This is God, we're all God's children. There's no racist in this country. Michael Jordan's my buddy and Beyonce, but they're trying to separate us. We've come a long way. I don't like Abraham Lincoln. You know why? Because he never educated the African-Americans. They let him go, but they never gave him the fair opportunity of education. They never did, and that was a problem. But what do we do about it now? You know, it's sad, but we're letting the gangs come down here. I'm seeing new cars with dance in them that were in the looting cities. We've got to take control of our city or we're going to lose it. Anyway, please be a donor. Please be a donor. My daughter's had two, a kidney that lasted 12 years and a liver. You don't want to be on that list and a kidney if it weren't for wonderful people and there's more wonderful out there than bad, but trying to be a donor. But please spend our money more wisely and fix the roads. You guys just drip at the money, municipal. Please. And I'd like for y'all to return my calls. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to go now. Give a rejection message and thank you. Next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
All righty. So my name is Alan Max Axelrod. I'm speaking to you.
You speak into the microphone, please.
Thank you. My name is Alan Max Axelrod and I'm speaking to you today in two capacities. The first of which is my capacity as a Champaign-Urbana Democratic Socialist of America co-chair. One of the things that the previous speaker brought up, many of which I disagreed with, but one of which was the importance of education when it comes to addressing violence. That was part of the previous person's statement, if you'll note. The Support for Workforce Training Program is something that we are still canvassing on. We even canvassed this past weekend when I was in the middle of a Zoom call, no less. We gathered more signatures in Garden Hills. We're going to keep going until we are all the way through Garden Hills and all the way through Silverwood at a minimum. The Graduate Employees Organization Solidarity Committee has just endorsed this and they are not going to be the last organization in this community to sign on. This body has time to deliberate on how to best appropriate the American Rescue Plan funds. When people in Chicago are talking about increased violence, when people in Atlanta are talking about increased violence, when people in New York are talking about increased violence, it's nothing unique here. Systemic issues are everywhere. Unlike the many other countries that have provided greater supports for their residents, we have left people to fend for themselves. As has been noted by previous speakers, at the cessation of the Fourth Moratorium on Utility Shut-Offs that the No Ameron Shut-Offs campaign has won, we did see an increase in violence. With the eviction moratorium in tenuous circumstances, that's not going to help the situation much either. So you do have a systemically literate option in front of you. And to emphasize this, the points that we've been making about public health are not vacuous. I was even criticized for a May 7th or so letter to the editor about how there was a new coronavirus strain that had arrived in Michigan. That was the Delta coronavirus strain. When have we been wrong? This is about trusting an empirical record. Speaking of which, in the fall of 2017, this body was faced with the potentiality of tuition waivers being taxable for graduate employees. And every single person on that bipartisan body then said that they were going to contact Rodney Davis to make sure that policy was removed from the legislation in consideration at the federal level. The Graduate Employees Organization Solidarity Committee is also a member organization of the No Ameron Shut-Offs Coalition. Again, 49-member organization coalition spanning the state of Illinois, north, the southeast, and west, winning four statewide moratoria on utility shut-offs, as well as over $115 million dispersed to 121,000 households by July of this year, the end of July of this year. Automatically, I might add, so when people are talking about the difficulty in dispersing the rent assistance funds, there is an automatic option. You can look at the eviction filings at the court and use other publicly or otherwise governmentally available criteria for providing automatic payments. But what I'm here to urge you to do, just as you did in the fall of 2017, is advocate to Congressman Rodney Davis to sponsor Rashida Tlaib's bill to eliminate rent utility debt in exchange for low-interest loans to water, electricity, and also internet service providers. This also calls for the suspension of penalizing people for the debt that they owe, whether it's submitting reports to credit agencies or late fees, anything like that. It calls for restoring everybody across the country's utility services and suspending disconnections for the duration of the loans. This is a solution to one of the largest public health issues that we've dealt with while the eviction moratorium remained intact. I urge everybody in this body to reach out, as they did in the fall of 2017, to Congressman Rodney Davis. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? We have John Hall at the time of the agenda item. Okay, we'll move on to council input and communications. Does anyone on the council wish to speak at this time? Grace?
Thank you. I've got a few things on my list. I'll just go through things that I'm thinking just to share the thoughts. I definitely still support the hybrid meetings for the public. I'd love to see more people. It's great we have this room kind of full and some people speaking, but I know that there are definitely plenty of people out there who would be participating if they could from home. So I would like to know a follow-up on a response from a state level on the legality with Open Meetings Act and having public hybrid participation. I also agree that having the meetings more clearly marked for the live streams would be helpful. I know quite a few other people who looked in the agenda where the Zoom link was for the live recording, which, you know, isn't where it is, but it makes sense that that's where it has been. So I think it would be good to have those very clearly marked for each meeting, the link for people to watch live. As far as housing, I think that it's really important for us to enforce the nondiscrimination ordinance for housing and employment in Urbana. I hope to have a resolution coming soon, working with others in the city. And also thinking about the township stuff and the Bridge to Home Program. It's got me still thinking about those city-owned houses for transition housing because it sounds like those line up pretty well. So just interested in pursuing that option and seeing if some partnership could work out for more transition housing to permanent housing. Another random thought was about one of our ordinance, the stop signs. One in Ward Six on Trails and Myra Ridge. I emailed with some staff in the commission about having a four-way stop at Myra and Trails. I think that would be much safer. They think that it's fine as is since they get reviewed every five years and it has been reviewed in the past five years, deemed it not necessary. We'll see what happens the next time it's reviewed when that subdivision fills up, but just wanted to update y'all on that without having to talk about it and pull it from the consent agenda. And one of my other notes was about ARP funding. That's really important funding and I'm looking forward to seeing how we'll have proposals, how we'll decide that, how we'll take public input. I think that there is some confusion from the public because it seems like Champaign County and the city of Champaign already have some sort of a process for proposals and we do not. And so it's just wondering how that will go. I know we're getting something soon and working with regional planning, but I'm interested in more details because people have been asking me and it seems like we don't have the answers yet. Thank you.
Any other council comments?
Couple of responses there. With regard to the ARP process, you'll be getting that in your packet this week, at least the agreement with the Regional Planning Commission. And the the we will be working with the staff at RPC to develop the approach to ARP funding, the process that we would accept proposals, and then RPC will also help administer the grant and handle paperwork and the reporting requirements. Some cities have already started the process for taking input. Many other cities have not. We are taking, you know, we will get this underway shortly. We're taking a thoughtful approach. There will be significant public engagement throughout the fall. We're just not getting started as quickly as some of as Champaign and Champaign County, but it will be every bit as thoughtful. And I think absolutely people will have an opportunity for for input. So the first step in that is approving the agreement with RPC at the Committee of the Whole next week. So more information on that to come. I wanted to let folks know that Sergeant Betsy Alfonso is going to be hosting a Neighborhood Watch informational meeting on August 25th at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. It'll be at the Ileas Building, which is at 1701 East Main Street. And this is for people who are belong to existing Neighborhood Watch groups and who are interested in starting new Watch groups. So I'll send that, you should have gotten that in a email, but I'll send that around to council members soon. And to the speaker who was concerned about the condition of the streets, I just wanted to let her know that we are going to be investing more in infrastructure. We worked very hard over the past few years to get our budget and our finances in order so we can now invest in infrastructure and we intend to increase our investment in our public infrastructure. And we also have the $2 million in equal funding in our budget this year for neighborhood-based infrastructure projects. I couldn't agree more about the horrific trauma that the shootings in our community are resulting in. And it's going to take short-term efforts to get these folks off the streets who are doing the shootings and long-term investment in things like education and housing and mental and physical health and all of that. So it's a two-pronged approach. We're also seeing an alarming increase in the conversion of weapons to automatic weapons. And some of these shootings that have occurred recently have been the result of people converting pistols into basically machine guns. And that's, that changes everything as far as the deadliness of these activities. So we, as I've said on in the media the past week, we need help from our state and federal legislators as well. We cannot do this alone and we need help from the community. Anyone else wish to comment? Sharice?
Yeah, kind of piggyback on what you were saying. I just wanted wanted to also, because I live somewhere where I'm constantly hearing gunshots and and reporting them. So this is when when people come to local government and complain and complain and complain, that's great. I like hearing that, but I also want to see you participate, 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 meaning that I shouldn't be the only person calling the police when I hear gunshots at 11 o'clock at night or 2:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon. And I am, as well as someone else in my neighborhood, we have been, we have been asking and working and requesting that we have some kind of cameras. We have something that would also assist the police in their crime-solving duties that they that they have to encounter so many times. And it's not just going to help with that. It may, it will also hopefully put back some some trust and some confidence that people can do the simplest things. They're not going to be afraid to work in their yard. They won't be afraid to walk down the street and walk their dogs, take out the garbage. The daycare centers in my neighborhood won't be afraid to let the children out to play. So we understand. No one's ignoring this issue. This issue is being discussed and it is trying, we are trying to come with some kinds of some kind of revolution, resolution and solution to all of this. The other thing in in keeping with that, I think I could speak for some of the people, at least here on the city council, in offering our condolences to Lorraine Coward, who lost her daughter in one of those shootings in my ward. So I'm, and I just wanted to make that public because I think she works and has worked for the county of Champaign for several years. And that needs to be acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of standing committees. Grace?
Thank you. And first, I would motion for a five-minute recess. Is there a second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Post. Okay, five minutes. Okay, we'll go to reports of standing committees. Councilmember Grace, welcome.
Thank you. First of all, is there, would anyone like to move any items off of the consent agenda? Yes, Mayor Marilyn?
Yes, we'll be moving items A and B from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and that's because some language was added to the preliminary development, the ordinance approving the preliminary development and it was removed from the ordinance for the final development plan. And you all received a copy of that in the packet. So it's just a matter of voting on that on the regular agenda rather than the consent agenda.
Do we need a second to move those to regular agenda?
I don't, do we need to vote to do that?
For a second or?
We do. Okay. Yeah, you'll have to ask for a.
Could we have a second?
I didn't think it needed a motion or action to pull something from consent.
Do we need a vote to pull something from the consent agenda?
I thought it was a privilege to pull something from consent, so I didn't know that we needed a vote.
Well, you you made a vote to put it on there and you do have to have a vote to take it off.
Well, it's just going to get moved to the regular agenda. You still want to vote? Okay, no problem.
I really am concerned about this because it's the privilege of a member of the council to ask for something not to be on the consent agenda. So if we vote against it, how can I, how can I say I don't want it to be on the consent agenda?
Good point. I take your point. All right, we will move, we'll move it from the consent agenda to the regular.
We all have to agree to put it on there, but only one person has to say it should be discussed to pull it off.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, so we will pull those first two items, A and B, from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. And so for the rest of the consent agenda, I would move to approve ordinance number 2021-07-029, an ordinance.
One second. Grace, did you want to pull, sorry. Is that something?
No.
Okay. Thought you mentioned that earlier in your comments.
No, I appreciate that. That's why I said it in my comments, so that we didn't have to pull it for me to just make the comment.
Okay.
Thank you for checking. That's okay. Yeah, I guess if there anything else that anyone wants to move from the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. Then we'll continue with the motion to approve ordinance number 2021-07-029, an ordinance approving an amendment to a redevelopment agreement with D and E Enterprise LLC, 136 Main Street, the Cohen Building at 136 West Main Street. LLC, 136 Main Street, the Cohen Building at 136 West Main Street. Also, resolution number 2021-07-031R, resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency Grant for Youth Employment Project Arts and Culture Program. So ordinance number 2021-07-031, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 2393 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Lexington Drive at Myra Ridge Drive, Vernon Drive at Myra Ridge Drive, Horson Lane at Myra Ridge Drive, Memory Lane at Myra Ridge Drive, Hillshire Drive at Myra Ridge Drive. And ordinance number 2021-07-032, an ordinance vacating a walkway in Countryshire Estates. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is that Sharice?
Any discussion? Oh, no discussion on these. Okay. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Thank you. That-
That motion passes.
Go ahead. Okay, vice versa. Okay. So next, we have the regular agenda. And do we need to, we need to move to accept to talk about the first two? Is that correct?
Just go ahead and call the first one.
Okay. So first is ordinance number 2021-07-027, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development, 101 West Windsor Road. And can we bundle them and also talk about the next one?
Since there's only two, you should just do them individually. It won't save any time.
Okay. Then we will do that individually. And presentation? Thank you.
No presentation. Since you moved it off the consent agenda, I just wanted to be here in case you had any, any questions. We did send out the supplementary memo that I think you all received last week. So are there any questions?
Go ahead, Mary Alice.
I don't have any questions. I was just hoping you could summarize the changes so the public was aware.
Sure. Yeah, so we made, we made some changes just to the ordinances for, we made three basic changes. The first is that we noticed that we had not included the waivers under Section 1, conditions and waivers, in the first one in the preliminary development plan ordinance. The second was that we had not stated the waivers that were being carried over from previous, previously approved planned unit development cases. We had not stated those anywhere, so we included those in that ordinance as well. And then the third is just procedurally, we do not need to include waivers in the final ordinance at all. Because if you think about it, if you are granted a waiver in the, at the preliminary stage, you shouldn't have to ask for those waivers again. So we just looked in the zoning ordinance, realized that they only needed to be in the preliminary ordinance. So that's why we made those changes.
All right, thank you. James?
Yeah, this is not a question. This is just a comment. I did receive communication from another citizen in South Urbana who was concerned about the height waiver. But the feedback from this citizen was in the context of looking at other homes in a residential area. And I still believe that because of the location of this, this is not your typical restriction on home heights, because it's on South Ray Street, and it's not near any other homes. It's basically across the street from the forestry area of the Ovi. Just wanted to mention that comment from the public.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Grace. I don't, I didn't hear a second.
I'll give a second.
Okay. And then is there any further discussion? Okay, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, go ahead, Grace.
Thanks. Next is ordinance number 2021-07-028, an ordinance approving the final development plan for a planned unit development, 101 West Windsor Road, Plan Case Number 2423, PUD 21, the final development plan for the same project. Do we have a second?
Second.
And that was 2021-07-028?
Correct.
Okay. Moved by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number 2021-07-030, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number one omnibus. So do we have a motion so that we can-
No, you'll move that.
Oh, I move this still. Okay, I have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, well, which one is that? Now, I think I'm lost.
Under regular agenda, item A.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next, we have resolution number 2021-07-03R, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of AARP Community Challenge Grant, Growing Community Program. And these are the ones with no recommendation, that we need a motion. Correct. Because this was sent to council with no recommendation, so for approval or not.
So we'll need a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution number 2021-07-030R.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mary Alice?
Mine's more of a comment. I just wanted to thank staff for putting in the location of the gardens into the resolution, so thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2021-07-033, an ordinance approving a First Amendment of Right-of-Way License Agreement between New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, DBA AT&amp;T Mobility, and the City of Urbana, Illinois. And we need a motion, because this was with no recommendation.
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-07-03.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mary Alice?
So I just wanted to get some clarity on the location of these. I mean, there are maps that were provided for us. And I'm wondering if this is, if you could remind me of whether or not this is to expand current service or to provide new service. I thought that this was for the 5G.
Public Works Director Tim Cullen is here. He'll answer those questions.
Good evening, council. No, so essentially, this is going to be their first installations for the small cell facilities throughout Urbana. This is no expansion, nothing like that. It's these six sites that have been pre-approved in the original license agreement. It was just an amendment to that agreement.
So my concern, that was my understanding as well. My concern then is that northern, northeastern Urbana is kind of, there's, it's a dead zone out there. So are there any other plans to expand this new service beyond these six points?
I don't know that, honestly. I wasn't here when the original license agreement was signed, but we could certainly look at, talk to AT&amp;T and ask them about that. As of now, this was their initial planned development. Not that it can't be expanded. Right now, I believe the license agreement's for 20 years. There's plenty of time in there for them to then expand it. And something that usually happens with other utilities that have license agreements with us is they end up expanding later, and they do, you know, a construction project every two or three years, or could be a bunch of, once every five years. But I don't know of any personally right now.
Okay. And right now, it's quite clustered in the center of Urbana or on the western edge, close to the university. My main concern was there's no locations on the northeast right now. So I just kind of wanted to bring that up. I'm trying to keep in mind equity throughout our community, and that, that's something that stood out to me.
Sure. I can certainly ask them what their, if they've got plans that they'd be willing to give us an update on.
Great. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions for, Jen? Grace?
Thank you. I did have some of the same wanderings and concerns about the location. They almost seem like they're kind of like on a circle around campus. I don't know if that's an intentional thing they're doing or what. But yeah, I'm interested in that as well, how those locations were picked, and kind of what that means as far as our service. I was also wondering in here, we talked about before that this change wouldn't increase the height of the light poles for proper lighting. And I was just wondering if you could point me to the direction of that in all of this technical reporting here. I was looking at the figures, and I didn't see any, like, it seems like this device is still lower than the light fixtures in all of them. And so I'm just wondering-
Oh, in the technical plans, so-
How the light height isn't changing.
Correct. The light height will not change. The light is set really by us and our photometrics of the road. So if you have 40-foot poles along a corridor spaced 200 feet, that's going to stay consistent. The pole itself, what the amendment is covering is, rather than them attaching equipment to poles, they want to replace the entire pole and build it five feet taller, so they have a more structurally sound thing they're attaching their equipment to, rather than an extension pole that's off of that. And that is in the amendment, which was in the original packet in the Committee of the Whole. It's really, that part is only like two pages. Let me find it. Yeah, so it's just the First Amendment. It's an ordinance. It's the actual ordinance, talks about it, is a one-page, and then the First Amendment to it is two pages right after that. I can just give you my copy if that's easier.
Sure. Yeah, is it in here? Okay, in the last week's one. Yep.
Yeah, it was in the, and all it modified was Section 8, the repeal, relocation, removal. We just added language that if we're going to allow them to build, to replace one of our poles with something that's taller than what we need, then we reserve the right to come back and tell them they have to cut the cabinet, take the extension off, if we're ever concerned to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
Reports of special committees. I don't believe we have any. Reports of officers. All right, we'll move on to new business. First up is ordinance number 2021-08-034, an ordinance approving a major variance, which is a porch at 907 East Washington Street. This is a zoning board of appeals case number 2021-MAJ-06.
All right. Hi, everybody.
This is Cat Trotter.
This is a request by David Huber for a major variance to allow a porch to encroach 10 feet, 10 inches into the required front yard at 907 East Washington Street. Staff received nine letters of public input. All were in favor of the major variance. A few of those were not included in your packet. That was a mistake on my part. I do have physical copies of those, if you'd like to see them now. I can pass them out real quick. And at the July 21st, 2021 meeting, the zoning board of appeals voted with four As and zero Nays to forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval. Staff tinkers. This is a location map of the property. It's on the south side of Washington Street, west of Philo Road. The applicant purchased the property earlier this year. The house and the existing front porch encroach into the required front yard. The porch encroaches 10 feet, 10 inches, and is 14 feet, 2 inches from the front property line. The requested variance would allow the applicant to widen the front porch to the east and west edges of the house while keeping the same encroachment. This is a zoning map. The property is owned R3, single and two-family residential, and the adjacent properties are also zoned R3. This is the existing porch, as it's shown on the site plan. The applicant requests the variance to add more outdoor living space on the front porch. She would like to widen the front porch and awning to be 11 feet wide. Here's the proposed site plan for the porch. The zoning ordinance requires a front yard depth of 15 feet, or the average front yard depth on the block, whichever is greater, up to a maximum of 25 feet. The average front yard depth on this block is approximately 26 feet, so the maximum 25-foot front yard is required. However, the average front yard depth on this block is skewed by a 75-foot front yard at 905 East Washington Street. If that property were removed from the calculation, the average front yard depth would only be 16 feet. No variance would be required in that case, because steps can encroach up to five feet into a required front yard if the building was constructed prior to 1950, and this house was built in 1947. This is an aerial view of the properties, and I've measured the front yard distances to show that skewed property at 905, and then the other front yard depths of the six properties on the block, four of the front porches, or stairs encroach into the required 25-foot front yard. This is a special circumstance and supports a variance at the location. To summarize, staff found that the application meets the requirements for the requested variance. The porch has been on the property since 1947 in the required front yard. The applicant would like to widen the front porch and maintain that existing encroachment. The variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or create a nuisance for adjacent property owners. Here's a few photos of the house and the existing front porch. The city council has the following options on the requested major variance. Approve the requested major variance, approve with certain terms and conditions, or deny the requested variance. As I stated earlier, the zoning board of appeals considered the case at the July 21st, 2021 meeting, and forwarded the case with a recommendation of approval. And the applicant is here to make a statement, and I can take any technical questions for staff. Thank you.
Okay. Let's have the technical questions, and then we'll, well, let's have the applicant make his statement, and then he'll be available, as you will, for technical questions.
Hi, thank you.
Make sure your microphone's on, and please speak into it.
Green light's on?
Yes.
I guess the only statement I care to make is like, and I've stated in the application, is that the, and I'm a designer, I'm an architect, so I'm speaking, from the position of kind of bigger than this specific case, is that the zoning is not actually, wouldn't, I could knock down this house, and many people have asked me in the course of the construction, why didn't you just knock it down? If I had knocked it down, I could build per the zoning code without any of this tribunal, porch tribunal, and that's not to be condescending, that's just to say that I could build something that does not fit into the character of the neighborhood. So this is an investment in a neighborhood, in an existing house by a resident of that neighborhood, and it's just to say that it comes with good intentions. I can't make money off of this. Some neighbor, a longtime Urbana resident around the street, said, "Well, hell, you're not adding a ballroom." I'm not adding a ballroom, but my hope is to improve the house, and that is why I'm requesting this variance.
Any questions? Chris?
This is an aside, but could you maybe comment on the red spray painted nine oh seven on that? Is that temporary solution right now? I'm not asking.
Oh, is that a serious question?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I actually like it, but no, it is a temporary solution in the course of construction to get deliveries to the right house. And if I just have my own aside, because I live in the neighborhood, and I've rented, this is now the fourth house that I'm renovating, I know my neighbors very well, I've talked to them about this, I've gotten the letters of support, and on and on. If there's one thing to bring back to the city council, and I have this opportunity, which is extraordinary, but I'm conflicted, it's a bit of a misplaced priority. They want to talk about other things, and this is not to dismiss this, but they wanted to know, why aren't we talking about the condition of the street, the safety of the street, and so on? So take that for what it is, and we're frustrated about a lot of things, and they want to talk about those things. They would love to bring those things before the city council. And they are very surprised that I had to go through this process. And again, I'm not gonna, maybe I am complaining a bit, but there's so much, there's so much else that we want to talk about, and as I said in the zoning board of appeals, the work I do comes from a place of optimism, and unfortunately, there's a kind of culture of pessimism around change, and I would like that to change. And perhaps there's other ways or outlets for doing that with democratic input, but it's, yeah, my neighbors didn't want to talk about the porch that much. I hope we can talk about other things going forward. Thank you for the-
Thank you. Any other questions about the porch? Mary Alice?
I first wanted to thank you for rehabbing houses. It's wonderful that we have people such as yourself who are going through Urbana and helping us upgrade these houses, but still maintaining the character of the neighborhood. So thank you for all of your hard work with that. I also appreciate the fact that we've received, as Cat provided to us today, multiple letters from your neighbors in support of this, and they spoke highly in those letters. And the third thing that I just wanted to say was, we basically have an open-door policy, meaning we have public input at every single meeting, and there's multiple ways for your neighbors or yourself to provide input to council, certainly coming to city council for public input and giving a statement, emailing us, emailing your individual council member. So I hope that there's multiple opportunities for those people to be able to voice what they are concerned with, and I would be appreciative if you would share that information. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Any porch questions? Shandra?
I move to approve ordinance number two zero two one dash zero eight dash zero three four, an ordinance approving a major variance porch at nine oh seven East Washington Street, ZBA case number two zero two one MAJ O six.
I'll second. Discussion.
Grace, did you have your hand up before? Did I see you?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to also echo what Mary Alice had said earlier about, you know, appreciate hearing any of that input and people to make comment or email us about other concerns or needs or great things about the area. About the porch, I was just, out of curiosity, wondering mostly about the eleven feet, so that would be like the width of the front thing, just so it kind of is like flush with that front part of the house, right? And is, this is not currently inhabited, right?
No, and it's important contextual information to say that the house probably has not been regularly occupied for decades. And there's a handful of these houses in the street. They deserve no social purpose. It was not liked by the neighbors. But yeah, so it's to say that the preservation of its existing state is as much a lack of use or of neglect than of choice. It just, it's been this way since forty-seven because it largely has not been occupied since probably the seventies or eighties. I bought it from the owners who constructed the house in nineteen forty-seven.
Wow.
Thank you. And may I ask, the long-term plan, is this to be a rental property or?
I will live in this house, but the other properties I own for on Washington Street, those are rentals.
Yeah, and thanks again for taking an interest in redoing some of these. Thank you.
Sharice?
I just want to say and ask also, so is this going to be an enclosed porch, like a porch that during the winter you can sit outside and just, you just want more room coming in?
Correct. No, it will have no railings. It's not, doesn't by the code require a railing. So it won't even have a barrier. It makes it sound kind of precarious, but it's not more than thirty inches high, which is, I believe, at the point it requires a railing, so no.
I was just looking at the design, and I was thinking, you know, what a nice way to just sit out in the summer and, without the mosquitoes.
Well, it faces north, but, no, I described the current porch as a step ladder to the house. It's nothing more than the
Yeah.
place to get vertically up to the floor level. If someone came to the door, you couldn't.
There's no room to maneuver on there.
Yeah, to maneuver on there.
I get it. I just wanted to understand if you were enclosing it, or you're just extending the porch itself.
It'll essentially be stretching the current shape of it, which is steps, three steps to a landing of about thirty and, three feet, which is what the minimum landing is at a egress door.
Okay, I was just trying to understand, trying to get a visual in my mind. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Percy?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Again, thank you for your investment in Urbana, and the concerns about speeding on Washington Street, I advise neighbors to contact the Public Works to go to the traffic commission. But that's not the topic for tonight.
It's not the topic. We do not, and I've been told for two years, have not had a traffic engineer in this city. The traffic commission doesn't have any citizens on its board.
They're being, they're, the one citizen is being pointed tonight, and that's a city council rep. So yes, the traffic commission can meet.
And it meets at four PM, which is outside of the time of citizen input. So, yes.
Okay.
And thank you to Cat, because she does very thankless work.
Thank you.
Really important. Thank you.
Okay, next item is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero eight dash zero three five, which is an ordinance approving a major variance porch awning and staircase at six oh four South Cedar Street, ZBA case number twenty twenty-one dash MAJ dash zero five.
Then, real quick, before Lena gets started, I wanted to introduce her to everybody, because I think you've all seen Cat over Zoom at least, but Lena, I think, is a fresh face. So Lena is our planning intern. She's been with us for a couple of months now. She's been doing a lot of great work as part of the Imagine Urbana comprehensive plan, outreach efforts, so you may have actually seen her out at a whole slew of tabling events. But since we like to give our interns a well-rounded experience with the city of Urbana, we figured we would throw some casework at her as well, and get her in front of zoning board and city council. So I will let her take it away.
And I believe this is your first presentation, correct?
Before the city council, yes.
Great, well, welcome. And please be sure to speak into the microphone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I don't know if the, can you see the presentation on your Yes. screens? Oh, you can, okay. Thank you. So this ordinance for approving a major variance, Andrew Fell, architecture and design, applied on behalf of John Paul and Linda Bizard. It's for a variance to allow the front awning and steps to be replaced at six oh four South Cedar Street, which is pictured here in the slide. The awning and steps are already encroaching into the fifteen-foot required front yard, and the homeowners would like to update the front stairway by providing a wider and covered landing. I don't know if it's, I don't believe it's International Porch Day, but perhaps we could petition the council for that at a future date. So this slide here, you can see the location. It's at the east side of South Cedar between California and Oregon, across from Leo Elementary. The house was built in the nineteen twenties, and the owners purchased it in nineteen eighty-two. This is the zoning map. You can see it's in the R two residential, single-family zoning district, and then there's the CRE district across the street, which is the elementary school. So this is the existing site plan. The front of the house currently already encroaches about two feet, eight and a half inches into the required fifteen-foot front yard, and the awning extends about two feet, six inches from the edge of the house, and the existing steps encroach into the required yard by approximately five and a half feet. So the zoning ordinance requires the front yard depth of fifteen feet or the average front yard depth on the block, whichever is greater, up to a maximum of twenty-five. The average front yard depth on this block is about ten feet, so the fifteen-foot yard would be required. The current steps would be replaced, which I'll show you in the proposed site plan here, you can see from the side view, they'd be replaced by a wooden staircase as opposed to the concrete steps that are there now, and that staircase would encroach twelve feet, two and a half inches into the front yard. Otherwise, the front yard would remain unchanged, except for the concrete walkway would be flush with the property line, but no differences otherwise. So there's some photos of the house here where you can see kind of the proximity of the front steps to the sidewalk on this property. To summarize, staff found that the application meets the requirements for the requested variance. When the current owners purchased this property, the structure was already legally non-conforming, having been built in the nineteen twenties, which was prior to the creation of the setback rules laid down in the zoning ordinance. So the zoning board of appeals voted at the July twenty-first meeting with four As and zero Nays to forward this case to the city council with a recommendation to approve. The request is presented in the staff report with the condition that the construction be in general conformance with the plans in ordinance attachment A, which you have in your packets. There was also one letter of support from a neighbor, and that was the only communication we received. Mr. Bizard also spoke on his own behalf at the ZBA meeting, as well as Andrew Fell. Staff concurs with the ZBA recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer, or do my best to answer, any technical questions that you might have.
James?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Welcome to council. Looking at a picture I have of this property, it looks like it currently, where the steps end, and there's that concrete platform, it has a walkway that goes in the front yard to the north. I don't see anything in here about the plan to remove that. Or is it already gone, and I just have an old picture?
Sorry, let me take a look at the photo here, so I can see what you're saying.
I'm using Google Street View, so it could be out of date.
Okay, so the, so the house is, okay, this is on. So the house is facing to the west, right? It's on the east side of the street? And then there is a landscaped front yard, and then there's the public sidewalk. Is there a walkway within the landscaped area in the yard?
The thing I'm looking at has a, has a walk that goes from the, like, right in front of the bushes there to the, to the north. They may have taken that out. It may have been changed.
Okay, and that may not be, so these photos I took about, like, a couple weeks ago, I think on July twenty-first?
Yeah, I think you can kind of see in the upper-left corner one?
Uh-huh.
You can see where it goes behind those fuchsia or red flowers on the other side of those, the steps there. Yeah, to the left, up and to the left. Yes, that walk right there.
Oh, right in front of the bush?
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
That goes off to the north. So are they going to take that out? Because the steps would make that inaccessible.
That I do not know based on the application.
The reason why I'm asking is, if you look at the house that's just next to it on the right, this really pushes the front of this house, like, right up on the sidewalk with the steps going up there. I know, I know why they want to do that. I would not want to navigate the top step into the house all the time. If I was coming in that way, having that landing there looks better, but you're pushing that whole stairwell, like, right onto the sidewalk there, and there's a house next to it that's deeper and doesn't have that kind of look. And so I'm concerned about what they're doing with that walkway and how far it's coming out. That's one person's opinion.
James, I do not understand where you're talking about. I'm not even going to try to think that. What are you talking about?
The steps are moving. I can't see
Comment here.
So the steps in here, and they're being pushed out this way.
Well, but this is still another wider step there. I think on here, right, does one of these say that it's thirteen feet, ten inches currently from the house to the end of the sidewalks with both those sets of sidewalks? And the new one would be twelve feet, two inches total?
Right, I'm talking about where the, this stairwell has been pushed from here all the way up to right on the sidewalk.
But I think it's replacing, because these are those extra steps.
Right.
It'll be farther back from the sidewalk, total, in the end, right?
Well, I don't see it that way.
Well, just to ask a question for that, is that a correct interpretation or no? Yes.
If you look at this picture, these steps would now be here. They are closer to this sidewalk, so the front of the house has been extended out right up to the edge of the sidewalk, and of course, you couldn't go on this walk anywhere because it comes up to here and the steps come down there.
Yeah.
This is just one person's opinion.
Sorry, depending on maybe how you interpret those last steps towards the sidewalk, or anyway, I'll let you answer the question on our interpretation, if you have a
I'm interpreting it with the measurements of twelve feet, two inches, and thirteen and ten inches.
Do you have any comments, Lena?
So I think this is a little confusing, because the step that is right next to the sidewalk, those steps that are there, they're essentially at grade, so they don't, they're not, they're not above grade, which is really what our encroachments are focused on. So the reason that a variance is required is, yes, like Mr. Quisenberry said, it's, it is pushing the bulk out and, and up into the yard, so it's not like those existing ones which are at grade.
I wish you all could see the house next to it, which is fairly deep in, and its steps come up in the same way, right to the door. And so it is going to be the only thing on this area that comes that close to the sidewalk with part of the structure.
Any other comments? Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I believe you said that there was one letter from a neighbor in support of this. Did it... Did they provide their address?
Is it not in the packet?
Well, it might be. I haven't found it again.
If, for some reason, it's not, I'd be happy to provide you with that. They did provide their address, I believe.
I'm just wondering if it's the person that is south of this house or north of the house.
I do not remember off the top of my head exactly where they were in location, but it was a house in proximity to them, somewhere close by. I don't see it here, which would be my mistake. But I can certainly provide it for you.
Lena, was it from Gary Appelstadt?
That sounds right.
Yeah, I think I recall that. He just came to get a major variance for some work that he was having done in the neighborhood as well, so.
He's north then, because he's on Illinois, and yeah, so he's north of this house.
Okay.
By about a block and a half, I think.
Okay.
Approximately.
Any other council comments? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Who moved and seconded?
Oh, we don't have a motion, do we? Sorry, I'm looking at my other one. Could we get a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-08-035, an ordinance approving a major variance porch and awning staircase at 604 South Cedar Street, ZBA case number 2021-MHA-05.
And there's a... Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. I know some of our technical questions morphed into discussion, but is there further discussion?
Well, I would like to say that I've gone to this house and walked up those stairs, and that first top stair is kind of, no. So I am glad that they're redoing the staircase, so.
Any other comments, discussion? Okay, now we'll vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Lena. Thank you, Kevin. Next item of new business is Resolution 2021-08-032R, which is a resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance for an agronomic research and training facility special use. And this is Champaign County ZBA case 008-80-21. So Kevin will present this, and we also have John Hall, who's the county zoning administrator here, to answer any questions.
Okay, so I don't actually have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation. I'm just pulling that up for later. So before I get into the, all of the details of the case, I did, I wanted to explain sort of what the city's role is in county cases of this type. This is detailed in the staff memo, but I kind of wanted to talk about those first and then get into all the details. So in certain county zoning cases, the city has a role, and that's because the city has subdivision authority within one and a half miles of the city's border. While in that same one and a half mile, the county has zoning authority, so there's sort of overlap there. So there are certain cases, like this case, where the county is proposing a text amendment to their zoning ordinance, where the city has protest rights if we choose to exercise them. So if we had a reason to protest this, then we'd be able to do that. A protest is, it really increases the hurdle that the county board has to overcome, because if the, if, not just Urbana, if any municipality protests a county case, they require a supermajority, so 75% vote at the county board versus with no protest, it's just a simple majority vote. So we typically reserve protest for cases that we have, that we have serious concerns So if we did want to protest, we would need to approve a resolution. And if we do not need to protest, or if we do not want to protest, all we have to do is not approve a resolution. So that's called defeating a resolution of protest. And so in that case, if we choose not to protest, no resolution is needed. It just, the resolution just dies on the floor, and nothing gets recorded. Okay, so, onto the details of the case. So the county zoning administrator is requesting a text amendment to their county zoning ordinance to allow what they're calling agronomic research and training facilities as a special use permit in their Agriculture I and Agriculture II zoning districts. And really, the impetus for this case, or for this text amendment, is that back in March, the county department of planning and zoning received an inquiry to construct such a facility on 300 acres of ag zone land outside of Urbana's one and a half mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, outside of every other municipality and the county's extraterritorial jurisdiction. And at this facility, they would be doing research for fertilizer. They would have a large digital, sort of a computer center to coordinate their worldwide research and application efforts. And then they would have a 400 to 600-person training center with an auditorium. Now, according to, and this is in your packets, according to the county's Department of Planning and Zoning staff, this text amendment would not impede eight out of 10 of the goals in their law, sorry, in their land resource management plan. It would help achieve one of the goals, and it would not be relevant to the final goal in that plan. The text amendment would also help them achieve the purposes of the zoning ordinance itself. It would be consistent with eight out of the 18 purposes that are stated in the ordinance, and it would not be directly related to the other 10. Finally, it would improve the text of the ordinance by establishing minimum requirements for these types of facilities and a means to regulate them. With respect to, with respect to the city of Urbana, if the proposed text amendment were approved, one of these types of facilities could be cited within our ETJ, within that one and a half miles. I think that's probably unlikely, since there's already one proposed for outside of that one and a half mile area. It sounds like a pretty substantial facility. It's not terribly likely that another facility of this type would locate near Urbana, but it's a possibility. If that were the case, and one of these facilities were proposed within our ETJ, the city would be notified that there was a special use permit application in for such a facility, and then the city could review the application and submit comments to the county board if we had concerns at that time. It wouldn't be protest rights. We do not have protest rights over special use permits, but we would be able to offer our comments or any concerns if we had any. Also, if a facility of this type were proposed in an area that's already served by the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District, the developer would be required to enter into an annexation agreement with the city, which would give us a lot more leverage and negotiating power to ensure that such a use would be beneficial and certainly not harmful to the surrounding area. So with all of that said, staff does not anticipate any negative effects of, or on our ability to plan or manage growth or development if the county approves the amendment. The Plan Commission agreed after a pretty brief discussion. They voted unanimously to recommend that council defeat a resolution of protest. So with that said, that really concludes my comments. Again, as Mayor Marlin said, John Hall, the director of the county department of planning and zoning, is here to answer any more in-depth questions, if you have any. But essentially, your options are before you. So if you would like to protest, you would make a motion to approve the resolution that's in your packet. So then all I vote, I votes would be votes to protest. If you do not want to protest, you would make a motion to defeat the resolution, and then all I votes would be votes to not protest the text amendment. As I said, the Plan Commission unanimously recommended option two, which is to defeat the resolution of protest.
Any questions for Kevin or John Hall, the zoning administrator for the county? James?
So just to summarize, the event that drove this is not within a mile and a half of the city of Urbana.
Correct.
What we are, if we allow this to change, we are affecting future possibilities, because we have areas zoned like that that are in the mile and a half, but we do have a process to interact with the county on that if that were to happen.
Yeah.
And if they needed sanitary sewer, we have even more control there.
Correct.
So it doesn't create a risk. My, I guess my question, I assume this is just an idiosyncrasy of how things work. Why don't we just adjourn and not do anything to avoid protesting?
Well, I think...
We have to take an action to say we don't want to take an action.
Sure, I think the county, and when cases like this come up, the county usually, they build in, into their process, time for municipalities to weigh in. I think they really want to, they want to know one way or the other, if, you know, if we have issues or not. So I think it's just, I mean, sure, I suppose you could go that route of just leaving it hang there, but they really do, I think, want, you know, want some, something concrete.
And can I invite Mr. Hall to join you there?
Sure.
Because I can't pass up a chance to ask him a question. It's been so long.
Hello, everyone.
So my question is more curiosity. Where is the big training center going to go? Is that a secret?
Well, it's not a secret. Technically, not germane to this, but since you ask, it's about three or four miles east of Willard Airport, a direct shot from Willard Airport, if you will.
Okay.
Outside of any ETJ, but at the same time, as close as they can get to the area with good transportation to the airport, just south of the U of I farms. I think they'll be drawing on U of I research expertise.
Okay, so closer to Savoy than anybody else, probably?
Probably, yes. That's right.
All right, thank you.
Sharice?
And while you're here, Mr. Hall, so this is a structure that's going to be testing fertilizer?
Yes.
Okay, will this have any effect, these tests or anything like that, have any effect on the water table that, for Champaign-Urbana? Or Urbana in general?
I wouldn't expect that. Any testing presumably has to abide by some rules by the Department of Agriculture. This is basically fertilizers that have been developed elsewhere. They'll bring and apply them to their 300 acres of best-prime farmland to make sure they can, they're getting the results they want. When they're successful, I don't know how many acres these fertilizers would be applied to, because this is for, you know, this is an economic process.
Okay, I was just wondering, because if, what kind of effect in the air, what kind of effect in the water, this kind of facility would have as well, not just, I'm not worried about the, I guess, the protest or whatever. If I'm going to protest, that's what I would protest. So that's what I wonder, you know, if there have been any kind of environmental studies or anything that, so that we could just know if there's going to be an effect on something that will eventually, eventually, long-term affect Urbana.
Well, this is an industrial manufacturer, facing all the liabilities that industrial manufacturers face these days. I think we can only hope that they're going to be judicious in their research. They're a big name, international name, but we're not, we're certainly not doing any environmental studies. We're going to trust that our state has a sufficient regulatory system in place, primarily with Department of Ag and EPA, so that, you know, it should be safe. It's not to say there won't be questions. There will always be questions when you're talking about industrial fertilizer.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So if I can just chime in here, I think that, so this will require a special use permit as well, so I think if they're, you know, on the county level, if there are questions about, you know, about those effects, they could be handled during the special use permit process. Is that correct, or am I...
Well, no, you're right. That's correct. Now, I don't want to overblow the county's special use permit process, but, you know, if we get a large manufacturer, well-known, we'll have a track record to go on. And that's what we have right now, is a large manufacturer, well-known, already has facilities throughout the county. Their fertilizers are already being used throughout the county. If we get a startup where there's no track record, the questions might be a little more rigorous.
I just don't underestimate corporations' abilities to weasel out of doing what they, you know, cleaning up what they mess up. That's my concern, so.
I think you're right to be skeptical. It's best to be skeptical on things like that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Grace?
Thank you. So I'm trying to understand the whole big picture of this, if I could recap. Let me know if this understanding is correct, that this facility is not within the 1.5 miles of Urbana, correct? So we're not, we don't really have a say on this facility in particular?
That's correct.
Okay. And so this resolution for the text amendment is just for that 1.5 miles around Urbana that doesn't include this facility, just anything in the future? Is that right?
Well, so if, so if this text amendment goes through, then one of these facilities, say, in the future, could locate within that one and a half miles of Urbana. It's a possibility, since they're adding it to their table of uses in their zoning ordinance. It's not just, it's not just a vote on this one specific facility. It's a blanket for the whole county they're adding the use, so, so yes. Could that answer your question?
Yes, I think so. So it's kind of, the county is saying that this is appropriate in this agricultural zone to have these kinds of facilities, and we just have the decision to say, except within 1.5 miles of Urbana, correct?
I suppose we would have, or we could have that ability. So if the, if in their text amendment, if the county said, "We would not allow these within one and a half miles of the city of Urbana," or any city in the county, they could do that.
Okay, but so this resolution of protest is for the entire county, and if it goes through, it just means that the county has to have a supermajority at the board to approve it?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
So not specifically about Urbana's extraterritorial jurisdiction? So not specifically about Urbana's extraterritorial jurisdiction?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think I got that one. I had a few more questions, too, slash comments. I was wondering, what was the public input at the public hearing that was mentioned in our packet? There was no, like, comments from the public?
No, no, there were. You mean at our zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
There were no comments.
There was just none.
Or, sorry, not at our zoning board, at our Plan Commission. Yeah, there were no comments.
Oh, maybe not that one. I'm talking about the Champaign County zoning administrator, the one on May 13th, 2021? Who was that?
We got no public comments either.
Oh, there just were none?
There were none.
Okay. Thank you. And next question, comment, I'm really curious about the fertilizer research and things. I agree with Councilmember Hershey's concerns, because there are a lot of environmental consequences of synthetic fertilizer use, and our current state regulations do not protect well enough. We've got a huge dead zone, the biggest one in the world in the Gulf of Mexico, particularly from Midwest agriculture, particularly from the state of Illinois. So I think that, that's a very big danger. We have dangerously high levels of nitrates in Lake Decatur from all of the runoff that goes in there. Fortunately, we don't have that in our aquifer yet, but we are getting a lot of farming byproducts in our aquifer, and it doesn't take long for them to get through the recharge center. So I have major concerns with continuing the synthetic fertilizer industry, and particularly having a hub of it in Champaign County, because we do have such great farmland and such great water resources, and those can quickly be destroyed by overuse of fertilizers and runoff and soil degradation. So I have major environmental concerns about this. I, I think there are objections with the, the county's goals on, sorry, let me find it, where it said that it was deemed, or is it, not relevant to the county goal of striving to conserve and enhance the county's landscape and natural resources and ensure their sustainable use. It was deemed that this will not impede with this goal, and I just don't agree with that, but I don't have all of the details. I would love to know more about the facility, what kind of fertilizers they'd be applying, at what rates. I'd like to know a lot more information before I could say that that wouldn't impede with sustainability and protecting natural resources, because it seems like it definitely would.
Is this still partially hypothetical? Because it says we received a serious inquiry and is anticipated. So is it still in talks, or is it like a done deal that this facility is coming?
No, it's not a done deal. Once this amendment is, is adopted, they'll have to have their own public hearing, and we haven't even received an application for that yet.
I see. Okay, thank you.
So what's before the council tonight is the focus on the text amendment, which would allow this to be located in the county. It's not the facility itself. That discussion will be at the county board, and I expect it to be thoroughly discussed there. Mary Alice.
So Mr. Hall, I'm wondering, it, it sounds to me like in your existing zoning rules for the county, that there is no mechanism for this type of facility to be in any of your zoning areas. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, they, they want it to be in the rural area, where the best prime farmland is, and where they can grow crops and study the effects of the fertilizer. So they want to be remote. That's our Ag One and Ag Two districts, and we, basically, those are agriculture-only districts. And in my mind, a use like this supports agriculture, to have better fertilizers, to reduce the effects on the dead zone, and so it seems to be consistent with that agricultural zoning.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll need to get a motion on the floor. So the motion to put on the floor would be a motion to defeat the resolution of protest, which is Resolution Number 2021-08-032R. Is there a motion to that effect?
It's either to approve or defeat, right? We necessarily decide either one?
Well, you, you, the motion on the floor should be, I move, you would move to defeat, and then your vote, if you vote aye, then you would be defeating the resolution, voting to defeat the resolution if you vote no.
Let's see. Oh, you reworded this, Kevin. All right.
Also, I was wondering if this is on a particular time crunch, or if we could send it to committee of the whole?
Well, it's, so, just as it shows on the screen, so if you, if you want to protest, you move to approve this resolution, because as written, the resolution says, this is a resolution of protest, and, and that's what you would then be voting on. If you do not want to protest, then you would move to defeat the resolution. And then a yes vote would be to not protest.
And how about for sending it to committee of the whole? I guess my question was if this needs to, if there's an urgency with the county, that this needs to be decided tonight necessarily, or if we could send it to committee for more time and discussion?
It's my understanding that there's some, some urgency, because I believe the, the board meets on the 19th. Is that correct? So this is, this is the last time we would have a chance to vote on, on this resolution, before they take it to their, their board on the 19th.
And what if they didn't hear from us? It just counts as no protest, or, I guess that was kind of the first question, too, of why we do the resolution and protest? Or if we said nothing, it would be no protest?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's your pleasure. Sharice.
So my question is this. If we put the resolution, a resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to Champaign County, okay, if we vote aye, then we're voting against, to defeat the resolution?
Depends on what your motion is.
Okay, well, okay, if we, but what I'm asking is that if somebody moves to defeat the resolution, all I votes would be the vote not to protest, no votes would be protest?
Correct.
Protest.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm just trying to understand. So either way, we can-
We can get there either way. It just depends on where you want to go.
Okay.
So I need a motion, and then we'll figure out how to vote. James?
I'm just going to say, that gets back to my original question, because if we, if we move to defeat the resolution, and it, and the move to defeat the resolution fails, I don't believe that is an approved resolution, that, that is the same thing as not saying anything. I think we would have to turn around and, if, if we want to protest, we would then have to turn around and move a-
I think the city attorney wants to weigh in, and we're going to change this process so we don't go through this again, because this happens every single time a, the text amendment from the county comes before us.
That, that's what I've heard, and so Administrator Mittens asked me to kind of look into this and just see if there's maybe a little bit less complicated mechanism to, to deal with these. This, this is my suggestion and my thought, okay? And so I appreciate Mr. Garcia's options that he's presented to you, but I think Councilmember Quisenberry's comment is, is exactly correct. My concern with making a motion to defeat the resolution is if that is approved, then you're, you're left then with, now what do we do, and what's the next step? If you make your motion to approve the resolution, right, and so you, you understand your yes vote would be to protest, your no vote would be to not protest. To me, I think that's clearer and cleaner, because then, is if everybody votes yes, you are clearly going to protest the text amendment. If the majority votes no, I think that vote also then would result in defeating the resolution. So I think you can account for both with your motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody?
That does. That seems much cleaner than the way we've done it since I've been here, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're heading in the right direction. All right, so let's see if we can get a motion to approve the resolution of protest on the floor.
I, I move that we approve the protest against Resolution Number 2021-08-032R, a resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance, agronomic research and training facility, special use, CCZBA-008-AT-21.
Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
I'd like to speak to my motion.
Please do.
My intent in putting this motion on the floor is, is not to vote for it. I'm going to vote no. I just, I appreciate the clarity that has, has been brought here, and I do, even though I made the motion, I do intend to vote no and not, and not protest.
Okay, just to remind folks, you've got a motion to approve the resolution of protest. So if you vote aye, you want to protest the text amendment. If you vote nay, you don't want to protest the text amendment. Mary Alice.
Well, I, I thought I knew what I was going to do when I walked in today. I spoke to Diane today because of the, of the phrasing of some of this, but, you know, Councilmember Wilkin and Hershey have kind of swayed me towards actually approving this. And I, I say that in that if we want to have a, a research facility that could potentially introduce harmful items into the water table or into the air, I think that it would be good for the county to have a supermajority, because then they are for those types of facilities. So I, I'm kind of leaning towards supporting the resolution that I originally wanted to defeat, but that, those are, those are just my thoughts right now, so.
Other comments? James?
I just want to clarify that this is defeating, or making the text amendment require a supermajority. They won't have to have that supermajority going forward if they approve the text amendment, each, each time this comes up. Okay.
Other comments? Grace?
Yes, wanted to add slash clarify, too, that if we did approve the resolution of protest, then it's not the binding decision, correct? It just means that the county needs a supermajority, so they need to be very much in agreeance with it, and that our decision isn't the final one.
Correct. And if the county wants to weigh in the actual facility, they need to do so at the county board, which is where this will be decided and discussed. Other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution of protest. An aye vote is a vote to protest the text amendment. A nay vote is to support the protest, is to defeat the protest. And we will change this, so it's a little bit clearer going forward, because we've been doing this for too many years this way. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it, five to one. So the motion was made to approve the resolution of protest. Thank you.
Thanks.
It felt like it took 10 years, but it always does, so we will. Yeah, we have a couple of these a year, and they're always very confusing. Okay, so last items on the agenda are some reappointments and appointments. A couple of reappointments are Elizabeth Hannan to the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees for a term ending June 30th, 2023. She, of course, is the Human Resource and Finance Director for the City of Urbana. The Police Pension Board, Fund Board has several members, she's one of them, and they manage the Police Pension Fund as prescribed under Chapter Five, Chapter Three of the statutes of the State of Illinois. I think that's probably a typo there. Major activities include awarding of pensions and investing funds until they're needed to make the pension payments. And then we have a reappointment to the Human Relations Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and that's for Carol Bradford, and she's been a longtime member of the Human Relations Commission. And then, so we'll take those, and that's for the, so we'll take those reappointments first. Is there a motion for these two reappointments?
I move to approve Elizabeth Hannan to the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees, term ending June 30th, 2023, and Carol Bradford to Human Relations Commission, term ending Jul, June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is that typical, that there's a, is this like a staff position on the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees?
Yeah, there's always been, there's been a staff member.
So Elizabeth Hannan is on there as the designated Urbana staff representative?
There are so, yes, and other members include retirees from the city and, I believe, some community members. There's, at least, I think on one of the other boards, possibly this one, there's former comptrollers, so it just depends, community members as well.
And is it typically the head of finance that's the staff?
In my experience, it has been. I don't know how it's been in the past.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need a voice, can we do a voice vote on this? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And then we have some appointments of new people to the Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024. The first is Lori Fuller. She's a nine-year resident of Champaign County. She's an Assistant to the Associate Dean of the College of Education at the University of Illinois. In her statement for, as an applicant, she stated, "I've been a resident of Champaign County for many years, lived in the state of Illinois my entire life. I'm an active artist and teacher in the community. I've been the recipient of four Urbana arts grants and receive funding to work with adults with dementia, as well as retired adults. In all of the places I've lived, Champaign County's support of the arts has been the highlight. I've never seen a community come together to celebrate all types of art and culture for everyone throughout the year. I'd love to be a part of the commission that celebrates the arts and continues to provide opportunities to the community throughout the year. Art is life and brings so much joy and confidence and vibrancy to many, and she wants to be a part of that." And then to the Plan Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024, I would like to appoint Karen Sims. She's a two-year resident of Urbana. She's an experienced consultant, trainer, facilitator, coach, and licensed mental health counselor. She's founder of the Trauma and Resilience Initiative, which is a non-for-profit that coordinates the community violence response effort in Champaign County, and the CUTRI Working Group, which is part of the Champaign County Community Coalition. Her statement included the fact that she's, she said she's more interest, "I am interested in being more civically engaged in my community, curious about development and growth in Urbana, and want to make sure things are done equitably and inclusively. I'm eager to learn more about how decisions are made in local government, and especially how citizens can be more involved in local government." Then, I will take this, we'll take a vote on these, so. Could I have a motion to appoint Lori Fuller to Arts and Culture Commission and Karen Sims to the Plan Commission?
I move to appoint Lori Fuller to the Arts and Culture Commission, term ending June 30th, 2024, and Karen Sims to Plan Commission, term ending June 30th, 2024.
I'll second. Motion by Sharice, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the information, getting to know a little bit about the appointee and reappointees' backgrounds, and the little blurbs about themselves, too. I think that's helpful to kind of get to know them and some of their values, and make a little bit more of an informed decision. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate that information and getting to know some of their goals better.
Sure. Okay, could we have, all those in favor of these appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. And then last, we have the appointments of council members to boards that in, in their ordinance, in their establishing ordinance has required council representation. So for Market at the Square Advisory Board, it's Jaya Colacetti. For the Regional Planning Commission, Mary Alice Wu. And Traffic Commission, Chandra Bishop. Could I have a motion for approval? James, did you have a question?
I, I do, but I'll get the motion on the floor.
I, I do, but I'll get the motion on the floor first. Actually, I can't, because are there terms associated with these?
They're, we, it was.
That was my question.
It was hard to determine if there were. It's not specified in the ordinance, and typically, council members have served until they are tired of it and asked to be replaced. So they're, these are indeterminate terms. Or they typically have lasted for the duration of the council member's terms. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm not going to make the motion then, because I'm concerned about that, because I think council members should rotate responsibilities and, and.
I'm sorry, should what?
Should be able to rotate responsibilities over the, a four-year period. I mean, if these, if these are locked in for four years, I think I don't want to make the motion.
Can I say something?
Sure, Sharice?
I, I don't think it's about, you know, if, if, for example, me being on the library board, which is what I wanted to be on, but they are, there had already been a council member on the library board at the time, and then he decided that he wanted to get on another commission, on a different thing. So when that opening came, and it was just like two months until my appointment, when that opening happened, that, that's what allowed me, he wasn't like required to stay there, he wasn't glued to the seat, I don't, I don't think. And so it allowed me to participate in the commission that I really wanted, that I really had an interest in.
Yeah, but state statute defines how long a library board term is.
Yeah, yeah, library, library board term is so long, is a, a particular, it, it is a particular term limit, okay? However, still that person, and he had already, I think he, he'd done a term limit, I just finished out his term.
Sharice's is a specific appointment, but these, these three in particular have had no specific term associated.
Yeah, I think that's kind of sloppy.
Well, it's, it's, if you want to specify a term, you can make a motion to that effect.
For, for my appointment to the Traffic Commission in particular, I am interested in this, and I ask to be a part of it. And so I think that, you know, particular to the council members being appointed to these boards, you know, if they're asked to be on it, then they can certainly ask to be rotated off of it. And if you, you know, as a council member yourself, have any interest in any of the other boards where council members are represented, then, you know, that's a conversation that you all can have. Yes, it is a little sloppy, we could tighten it up, as we will be doing all the other appointments. So I, I mean, I think for now, we just, like, we have been sort of role with it, and then when the appointment time comes next, then we put a, a more definitive time limit on it.
Any other opinions, comments?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Does Chandra and I need to abstain? We don't? It's a voice vote, okay.
Okay, well, I move for the appointments, if that's, can I do that now?
You may make a motion.
Appointments to boards and council representation. Market at the Square Advisory Board, Jaya Colacetti; Regional Planning Commission, Mary Alice Wu; and Traffic Commission, Chandra Bishop.
Is there a second? I'll second. Is that Chandra? Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of these three appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. With no further business before the council then, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.